I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
This is a motion by Aaron, second by Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
And then I consider a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
And first item on our agenda is a second reading and public hearing.
This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning Lot 2, Tempo Edition, North Half, the Southwest Quarter, Section 24 Township 100 North, right 51 West, Ellepre Township, from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Toby Brown, representing County Planning. The applicant for this item is Nathan Land. He's the project engineer. The property owner is A&amp;T Rentals LLC. Location is property, the north side of the parcel is adjacent to the city of T. The Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan guides this parcel for urban expansion area. The city of T's comprehensive plan guides this property or parcel for commercial uses. As noted, the subject property is currently zoned A1 agricultural. The parcel size is 6.54 acres. The property adjacent to the east and to the south is currently zoned commercial. The property directly to the east was recently rezoned to commercial. Staff is working with the city of T and the applicant to develop that property. But the properties to the south are all developed for commercial, light industrial type uses. Subject property is currently undeveloped, currently utilized for agricultural purposes. The applicant did submit a concept plan with the application, identify a structure on the property that would be utilized for commercial type uses. The, if this application is approved, again, this property, this 6.5 acres would be zoned C Commercial. Staff did recommend approval of this application, and the Planning Commission did concur with that. So with that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Anybody have questions for Toby? All right.
The applicant is in attendance this morning.
All right. Does applicant want to come on up?
Sure.
You want to just step up to the podium there with a microphone and tell us about your plan?
So currently what we're, what we're looking at is rezoning from agricultural to commercial. The applicant has, has an intention to put, I believe it's 70 by 300 for a maintenance type shop, utility type shop in there, and some indoor storage. And then, and then a smaller boutique type commercial use on the, on the corner there.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Is that smaller boutique a separate shed or part of this?
Yeah. No, it'll be a separate structure.
How big is that?
Give me one second here. So the smaller structure is, is we're looking at 70 by 70. And then the larger one is, is 70 by 230.
Any other questions? If not, do we have anybody present who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? All right. Anybody here to speak against it? All right. Any other public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, I consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve. City seems to have signed off on it, so.
All right. I've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Question. Do you have any, did they put any landscaping or anything that they talked about from planning and zoning to buffer or anything like that?
Um, we are, I am currently working on a site plan for this, so there will be, there will be landscaping and buffer consistent with the city of T zoning ordinances.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Sean, may I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Move on to our next second reading and public hearing?
This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning a portion proposed tract one Johnson addition approximately 4.25 acres of the property legally described as west half of the northeast quarter, except railroad right of way lots H1 and H2 Lewis Track 1, that portion of the west half of the northeast quarter lying north of the railroad right of way, except the north 33 feet deeded to the city of Canton. Section 22 Township 98 North, right 49 West Canton Township, from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this, the applicant for this item is Alan Welsh. The property owner is Darcy Johnson. The west side of a portion of this parcel is within the city of Canton corporate limits. The comprehensive plan for Lincoln County guides this parcel as urban expansion area. The city of Canton's comprehensive plan guides this parcel for commercial uses. As noted, this property is directly adjacent on the west side to the city of Canton. The rest of the property is zoned A1 agricultural and utilized for, currently for agricultural purposes. The property, so the full portion of that parcel is not petitioned to be rezoned. The parcel that's petitioned is the north part of it, the 4.25 acres of it, directly adjacent to the railroad and right of way. The applicant, in the application identified that the purpose for this was for commercial type uses. Did have some extensive conversations with staff from the city of Canton regarding this application. Identified that some of the uses would be restricted because of the location to the city of Canton. But assured them that staff, if this rezoning was approved, that staff would continue to work with city staff as the property is developed, site plan wise, conditionally use permit wise. This is just the first step of allowing it to be rezoned. It's, we also did have extensive discussions with this, with city staff regarding the utility availability of this parcel and the need for it to be rezoned under the county as opposed to being rezoned under the city portion of it. So a lot of that discussion came, conclusion was with this application being submitted for the applicant to rezone it. And again, this is consistent with the city of Canton's comprehensive plan. Any future development of the property, staff, county staff would work with city staff to make sure that it's concurrent with whatever policies and vision that the city has. Staff did identify that this application is consistent with the county comprehensive plan and the city comprehensive plan. And the Planning Commission did concur with staff's opinion on that. With that, I would have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Anybody have questions for Toby?
One question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
On the exhibit site, it represents just that part on the 4.3 in the red there.
Correct.
Why are we highlighting all of that area to, separate on that parcel? Can you tell me that?
Because that's what the current parcel is right now.
That is, there is a separate parcel there.
Yep. It's not been replatted to the 4.25 acres as of yet. So the full parcel.
But that parcel is separate of the rest of the property that you own. All right. Thank you for clarification.
All right. Any other questions?
This is for commercial use?
Yes.
Is that Toby?
Yep.
Any idea what commercial we're going to put in there?
Well, originally, the applicant identified that they wanted to do a liquor store there, but there are some restrictions to that because of state statute. But did further discussions with the applicant, and they still identify that they want to do commercial type uses on that property.
Other questions?
And just for clarity, it would be Canton's subdivision plan that would govern access and all that. Because one question I will have for is how exactly they anticipate getting in and out of the property.
Correct. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Applicant present?
Joe Stavich, representing Alan Welsh and the Johnson property.
Good morning, Joe. Can you just give us some testimony on what you're planning on doing?
It's going to be retail development, kind of like Toby said, in conjunction with the city expansion plan, just looking to zone this commercial right now. So what's to be in there is to be determined. This is simply the rezoning.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, go ahead. One of the first things that I would have curiosity on is access proximity to the railroad. And have you, has anyone visited with the state concerning and/or the city about how accessing the property?
We have not yet, but we'll make sure that all requirements are met prior to doing so.
All right. Commissioner Schmidt, did you have a question?
I had the same question about an access point.
All right.
You have not secured one at this time.
Correct. There, there is one. I can't tell you exactly how far off the railroad is, but there is a current access point.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other questions for the applicant, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance other than the applicant? Anybody against? All right. If not, close testimony and ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the motion to approve. I do have some questions, concerns, may not support it based on the conversation I'll have, so.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I'm not exactly sure, Madam Chair, procedure on this, but I do believe that I would ask that we, we reassure that there is actual access to the property. It may be premature without knowing how one can get to the property. I do believe that as far as the land use, it makes sense to the comp plan, but without access to it, it might be premature.
Well, I guess my two cents are on that. It's not our problem.
No.
So.
Well, yes and no.
Anyway, other further discussion, comment?
Those are, those are my concerns as well, is public safety is everyone's business. And when you've got a railroad track that basically intersects 75% of the frontage of the parcel, that's a serious concern, especially given the fatality that happened up in Harrisburg recently. It's very distressing. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic on Highway 18 there. I think you've got, you've got a difficult parcel here. That's what I'm concerned about. And so if we create the commercial gateway for it, we got to take responsibility for all the traffic that goes along with it. And, you know, I could foresee you getting like an easement there from that abutting parcel, but I think you're in a, you just got a difficult position here. Because my guess is before you intended to make this a commercial property, there probably, a few years ago, it was never intended to do this, right? And it was never a concern then. Now it is. And so, you know, I'm just looking at that railroad track there. I mean, I think 75 to 80% of that eats up your frontage. So that's, I think the land use is comprehensive, but it's a gateway. You know, we're creating a gateway or permission to be able to get an access point to that property. And so I've got real concern about that.
Any other discussion? All right. Got a motion and a second? Sean, you want to call it?
Commissioner Aaron's.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
I'm going to have to defer to no just because of the concerns about the access.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
All right. Motion fails. Move on to item three on our agenda.
This is a public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale malt beverage license to operate outside of a municipality for the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation, located at 34.12 acres in northeast quarter, including railroad property 2999.51, Lincoln County, South Dakota, for a fundraiser on March 25th, 2023. The location is the Lincoln County Fairgrounds, parcel 09951291010. And Wendy told me last week she was going to be here to speak on this, but I don't see her.
Yeah.
Oh, is she on the phone?
But I'm on the phone.
Fantastic.
Good morning, Wendy.
Morning.
Go ahead and tell us what.
This will be our fourth Raise the Roof fundraiser. It's going to be basically the same sort of format, where we'll have a meal and entertainment and an auction and silent auction, so. That's all that I know.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Wendy? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? This is a public hearing. All right. If not, I'd consider a motion.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call it?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we've got is a sports raffle, Wendy?
Yep. The Shooting Sports Club wants to hold a raffle. They've, they did it last year for sure, and I think they've done it for a handful of years, I believe. I don't have in front of me what exactly all the raffle items are, but they're going to sell tickets for $10 a ticket. And they'll start selling 30 days after this meeting. And then have the drawing about mid-April.
All right. Heard the request. Do we need to take action on this?
You do not, not unless you oppose.
All right. We'll move on to item five. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Morning.
of the commission. So I'm bringing to you guys today a board action to approve the 2023 employee holiday schedule. In prior years, we, you all would set out administrative days, typically the week or month that those days would happen. Over last year, I believe the year before that, we named those ahead of time so that way departments can schedule and be better prepared for those days off. In addition, I am asking for your consideration that Juneteenth be added to our regularly scheduled holidays and in turn, you know, offer whether or not you want to add any additional administrative leave like you have in the past, or just use those hours for Juneteenth. As I noted in here, in the briefing forum, that we also have our, a couple of our bargaining units have Juneteenth as a named holiday. So being able to make that equal across the county would be great.
Commissioners, thoughts?
Do we have any need to change? No?
Well, it's Juneteenth.
Juneteenth.
But do you want to change anything else? I mean, I don't have a preference one way or the other, I guess.
I don't either.
I think last year, we just held off on Juneteenth because it would have included another day. But at this point in time, the state's already adopted the schedule that it's a federally recognized holiday. Now it's a state-recognized holiday as well. So if we want to stay consistent and nested with the state holiday.
Is Juneteenth always a Monday holiday?
No.
Or is it always on June 19th?
It's just the day, I believe.
Whatever month, or whatever the 19th comes in on.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Christmas is on a Monday this year, so.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it was Sunday last year.
Madam Chair, if there's no other discussion, or you, you have to, public comment, do you?
I am going to ask for a public comment. Thanks for the reminder. Anybody in the public want to come up and comment on this item? All right. I'd consider a motion, whatever that may be.
So moved, Madam Chair.
What's your motion?
To accept our employee holiday schedule commensurate with the state of South Dakota. Isn't that right, Joe? We follow the same rules that the state does.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a supporter of just following the same rule that the state does. So if that's your motion, I'll second it.
That's my motion.
Um, Madam Auditor, do you want to come on up?
Are we in trouble?
Maybe.
Again?
Thank you for adding that. I was.
So are you saying that you want to follow the state's holiday schedule? So if they get a holiday, or if they get an administrative leave up, then we take the administrative leave off? Or are you saying that you only want to add June?
Thank you for kind of that. That was going to be my question as well. Sorry if that was muddied. No, you're great. Thank you. Sorry if that was muddied in my proposal. I am asking, yeah, that, because the state does have published holidays, but then they also add administrative days. And so for our department, I've asked just that we add Juneteenth as a published holiday, and then we don't do any administrative holidays, unless obviously like the courthouse is, is closing for weather is a separate issue. But for holidays, that was my request.
Thanks for clarifying. That's my motion.
Yeah.
So your motion is to add Juneteenth?
Juneteenth.
My second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Any public input, discussion? All right. Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. You've got the next item, next couple items, it looks like.
I do. So I was asked to bring this position for your consideration. It's the air, new position of an airport manager. As you all know, we ended our contract with the third party in managing the airport. And from what I understand, the highway, I mean, the buildings department has handled some of those items. And we're been in the process of building a job description. So I brought that for your, for your consideration. As I wasn't a part of all the conversations, since it was prior to my time, I can't give much clarification outside of related, specifically to the job description and pay.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Airport commissioners, Gibbon?
What's your report?
Poppins? Any input?
Commissioner Poppins, have we solved the resolution under, or I shouldn't say resolution, essential functions regarding fuel and oil sale?
Well, that's, you know, separate issue for the manager that'll be out there. It's going to be, again, we'd have to take official action on it. And I will recommend when it is our, when we put it on the agenda, that we have confirm, affirm that we are going to take over those sales.
Are you, are you wanting just us to approve this, the description of the job today? What are you actually wanting today?
So I wanted to see if there was any discussion or clarification on the specific job description and then give direction if you would like me to go ahead and start recruiting for that position.
All right. So Commissioners, has everybody looked at the job description itself?
Yeah, I, I think the job description in summary is, is suitable. And I've got no objection to it. If we hire internally, I mean, granted, I know we have, we're going to advertise for all. And we're going to dutifully consider everyone who applies. But if we do hire internally, depending upon where an internal hire would come from, I don't want to see that position refilled. So I want this to be cost neutral to the county, so we're not creating a new FTE. So, I mean, I'll support this, but, but if we hire internally, that, that other position would have to go away. So that's, there's some kind of revenue neutrality to it.
Madam Chair, if I may answer that question.
Go ahead.
The position is currently being dealt with through an independent contractor that handles the management out of there. So a majority of the costs for our employee will be offset by that reduction of that contract. I, I want, I don't want to speak for John. He's very capable to do that. I don't know that he would be able to maintain the property without an individual, if somebody were to come out of his department or any other department in the county as far as a transfer. So I think it'd be a case-by-case situation, depending on if somebody from our current job pool takes that position, so, or applies.
All right. So can we get a motion to allow this to move forward?
Is it public or not?
Uh, yeah. Yep. There will be.
Okay, you want the motion.
I'm, I'm, what are we trying to accomplish?
I'm going to offer the motion to move forward with this job description and advertise to fill the vacant, the new FTE vacancy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Now, now further discussion. Is there any public input on this agenda item one way or the other? Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. Mark Nordsee, 7900 South Pinewood. I'm a licensed private pilot. It's great that Lincoln County has an airport. But if we're going to hire a manager to do duties, I would like to see very specific requirements that they make the airport profitable, that there is no continuing expense to the county, that it is a profitable operation, and that should be their number one concern. Well, actually, it should be their number two concern. Their number one concern is safety, which is already in the job description. But this position, when you're hiring somebody to be a manager, they need to have financial accountability, and we need to make sure that that airport is profitable. It's a landlocked airport. It's not going to grow. So it's always just going to be a place for the private pilots to have an enjoyable weekend. And, but it shouldn't be done at the expense of taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or public input?
Commissioner Schmidt, I think you probably heard me say that back in '02 to '06, somewhere in there, so.
We've, we've come a long way.
We've come a long way. To your point, Mark, thank you for that. It is definitely the goal and has become a very conscious effort to make it neutral, to make it profitable. Probably won't happen, but at least so it doesn't burden taxpayers is, is definitely on our radar. So thank you for your comment.
Just to, for the record, I think at one time, Mark, we were substituting about $2.50 per person in our county to keep that airport going. And now we've worked hard, and I think we've got a long way to go, but we've certainly cut back on the amount of subsidies that are required. I like, I think that, where are we on, since we mentioned the airport, and pardon, Madam Chair, where are we on the instrument approach?
Do you have any news on that?
It's being reviewed again. It was turned down. An entity that had a veto type of power said no to it, but it's in process of being reviewed and appealed.
That would change tremendously if we could get that, but anyway, okay.
That PC you have built? Thank you.
All right.
Tracy, what would this position be, or the salary start at?
So it would be a similar position to the building superintendent currently. So it is a grade 111. I apologize, I didn't, didn't bring the, I guess the dollar amount at the moment. I can get that and get back to you.
Just if you had to take a swag at it, what does 111 come in at?
Let me see if I can pull it up and let you know.
You got this salary schedule?
I'm pulling it up. It should be like the paid grade listing. I'm not sure if it, it's the same at 2022.
111 would start at 3037 an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
How much was that again for you, Peter?
3037 an hour.
Any other questions? All right. If there's no further discussion or questions, no public input, I'd go ahead and have Sean call the question.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Motion carries?
Thank you.
Next item?
Um, the next item is the Commission Administrative Officer. Again, I was asked to bring this position, um, I, with the partnership of State Attorney's Office and the auditor, uh, looked, created the job description. It's similar to, um, many Haha County and what their position was. I know that's been a point of conversation for you all, so this is just to bring, so you guys can discuss if that position is something you wanna move forward with and review this current job description.
Terry, how does this change? We're changing this from a heavy equipment specialist to a diesel mechanic.
Wrong one.
Wrong one. We're on, we're on number seven.
Pardon me. My bad.
Madam Chair, I'll give my two-minute speech if it's all right.
Yep, go ahead.
I'll keep it at thirty seconds hopefully. Um, for the public, this is something that I've actually asked for, for quite a few years. I think it's a, a resource that is needed for the commission to communicate to its public and get its functions done properly and efficiently. Um, there's no doubt it's a new FTE. Uh, it's always been the argument, we can't afford it. I've always argued that we can't afford not to have it. In an age where, you know, we are needed to express accurately and efficiently and timely in- information uh, to staff, department heads and the public, uh, this person will become an extremely valuable tool, uh, day one, when that person, male or female, uh, hopefully is hired. Um, so I encourage, uh, the board members to, unfortunately have to add an FTE, um, to, to, to do this, but I do believe it is something that is well overdue and, and is a needed function for the, for our government to be efficient, so thank you.
Other comments by the board?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Lincoln County is a population, uh, as we approach seventy thousand people. And when you look across the state to, um, how many counties have administrative assistance? We stand out, uh, glowingly having, we don't have one. The demands on commissioners to research, to do the background checks, to really function and dig into issues, we really need assistance. And, uh, I know this is supposed to be a part-time job, but I think if you talk to anybody, you're spending, uh, thirty, forty hours a week sometimes just on these issues. So I think to, for efficiency in government, we really do need to have this kind of information available to help guide these decisions that we make. And every decision we make becomes more and more critical all the time as we continue to grow. So I'm totally in support of this.
Thank you. And I guess just from my point of view, this person is gonna be somebody who I think will end up paying for themselves simply because they're going to, um, put some focus on, uh, grant, um, searching out grants, um, that would be beneficial to the county and bringing those forward. So I think this would be a cost-neutral, um, item in the long run. So I am going to support it. Other discussion or comments?
I guess I'm a little hesitant right now, Madam Chair, just from the standpoint under, under essential functions. Uh, serve as a permanent member of the Lincoln County Building Committee, which oversees new construction modification, remodeling all county-owned facilities. We were just here last meeting and of course, the main objective of the people here was that you need a site to build before we can go forward with any particular, ideas of design and so on and so forth, or courthouse expansion. So I guess I'd like to have some of these things, I guess, in place. So I guess, uh, I think we're kinda putting the cart before the horse here a little bit and I don't know if I can support it right now.
Yeah, um, if you can respond.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, and otherwise I'd defer. Um, actually, this is where this individual would shine in, in our ability to try to acquire a piece of property. Um, it has become not an easy task. Some of the initial locations have been, um, no longer available and as long as we're trying to, uh, find a spot without having to use eminent domain, uh, which means willing buyers and sellers, um, it's, it's a very tedious task that now is being handled predominantly by, uh, Mr. Golden for our services, um, which again extends, you know, way beyond what expectation should have been of him for what his do- duties are, excuse me. So again, this is just a prime example of why this individual is, is needed, so thank you. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Erins, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. You know, I guess I'm kind of on the fence about this position. I'm a little more nuanced. I'll just say this, I think there are some due, I mean, let's face it, right now, the duties of this position are essentially carried out by Bill Golden and he's done a fantastic job doing them. And frankly, if this position gets approved and if he would apply, we would dutifully consider all applicants, but frankly, the guy would be at the top of the list. But then that leaves a, if that would happen, I'm just playing this forward, that leaves a hole in the State's Attorney's Office and then they would wanna hire another person. So we're talking at to the creation of a new FTE. Now, creation of the FTE in and of itself is not necessarily my main objection. It is one objection though. But realistically, there is a lot of time eaten up by the Deputy State's Attorney in terms of assisting the commission. And I think we all recognize that, that he serves an essential function doing that right now. And so I see the pressure and the stress that puts on wanting to hire a person to do that full-time so that the per- so that what Bill does right now could essentially be filled by another person to give full-time attention to State's Attorney duties. But there is some crossover. Look, we can't be blind to the fact that there is a lot of crossover and time that gets spent by the State's Attorney in advising the commission. And that won't stop, you know, just creating this position won't stop that. But here is a specific objection I have within the, the job duty and description here is it says, "Serve as legislative lobbyist for commissioners during the annual South Dakota Legislative Session. Prepare legislation for consideration during session and go testify on bills." I don't support taxpayer-funded lobbying. I'm opposed to taxpayer-funded lobbying. I'm not a fan of it. I don't like it. I don't think taxpayers should pay money to advocate for getting more taxpayer-funded money. So, um, is it good to talk to legislators? Yes. But we as commissioners can take care of that ourselves as elected officials, talking to other elected officials. We don't have to hire somebody to do that for us. I'm opposed to that job description right there. So that's, that would be a concern that I have right there. Um, and then I, but I do think there's some good things in here too. I mean, for example, this person would review contracts. They represent the, the commissioners in direct negotiations with employee bargaining units. So some of the jo- essential job functions here, um, you know, are certainly covered by what Bill Golden has been doing for us so far. So I see the goodness, I see the bad in it. I'm just hesitant, obviously, to wanna support more taxpayer-funded lobbying. So that's a big concern I have.
Um, Commissioner Erins, if we go through this, so we're preferred qualifications that, um, the sentence that starts proficiency with rules. I mean, are there specific edits that we could make to this that would, um, be satisfactory to you? I mean, 'cause I, I understand your concern and I have that, um, same concern as well. So just, I mean, I could take a red line to a few places in here, um, and maybe bring this back next meeting?
Yeah, it, look, I mean, I'm willing to work with you on it, yeah, you know, I mean, I would probably support it if we, uh, amend out a couple of these essential function issues. 'Cause, I mean, look, you'd have to be blind to the fact that Bill Golden spends a lot of time, advising the commission, essentially serving this function, eh, the functions of what this position would do. Now, eh, right?
Actually, if I may, uh, to maybe alleviate some of your concerns, this is just a job description. You'd still be under the direction of the commission of what they actually did. So if you don't want them to go, it's just simply to make sure that they would have that type of, um, skill set so that if you wanted a, a resource for going and talking to your legislator or, or whoever you need to do, by no means would that automatically say you're sending them to peer to go lobby. Just means that they have that skill set.
To that end, Poppins, if I may, I, that's the goal with, no, no, I was gonna say that is the goal with job descriptions is to just be able to give an employee the broad range of this is what can happen. We do add the disclaimer, we can make the department head, so you all would make that change to make any modifications as necessary, so, um, so job descriptions inherently will not name everything that is happening in that job, but I definitely, um, think we could make adjustments and bring it back whenever you want.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Commissioner Poppins to that extent. He's right about the fact, we can direct that person to do whatever we want and we could redline this out of the essential functions and three weeks from now, the commission could vote to send him up there to do legislative lobbying.
It's, yeah.
But it, but by taking a stand from the beginning and eliminating that part of it, it sends a message and hopefully we would show some fidelity to that message that we're not gonna use this position and use Lincoln County taxpayer money to go influence legislation. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I support that as well. It's just, it's in the description. It'd still be a matter whether or not we send them or whatever, whoever the commissioner is there. Just to have a skill set.
Madam Chair?
So I'm gonna ask.
I'd like, well, usually, you know, counties have resolutions that they form and that are germane to their particular county or their particular needs. And every year, the county association votes on prioritizing which one of these resolutions that come from sixty-six different counties. In my time on there, we've never offered a resolution to be considered. And I looked at this position and I thought this would be a way in which we had some issue that we wanted to bring to the attention of the state, that it would be a way in which we could filter through the state association. That would be their responsibility. But I'm in agreement with you. I, I don't want, see somebody up there walking halls. These, our, our county association hires, uh, a lobbyist and they do that work for us. So we have no need for a local person other than ourselves to go and commit to the time and, and testify. I don't believe we need to have some other individual do that for us.
Well, and Commissioner Schmidt, you, I mean, you know, you and I have talked about this. I've groused about how the money from the state association, we, we pay money. Lincoln County pays through its appropriation process money to the county as, the state county association and that money gets used for taxpayer funding as well. And you know I've groused about that and objected to it, but, um, so, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Has, uh, Madam Auditor, have you budgeted for this position this year? And if you have, how much are we talking about?
You have not budgeted for your position.
And how much, uh, money are we talking about at this time? Or is that, has to be determined yet for a salary?
My recommendation for this, uh, grade is to be at a one-eighteen, which is a, a new grade, which would start at a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Hundred and fifteen thousand?
Uh, the reasoning behind that is that this position is typically the highest grade because of the authority that they carry is your certain voice to the rest of the county.
And that would be the, that would be the floor. What's the ceiling on it?
Um, that I believe the ceiling is like one-forty, but the hiring ceiling is much less than that, I think. Yeah, it's like more like one-twenty-seven.
All right, any further discussion?
Can, can I ask one more? How did we determine that level? How did you determine?
So I, um, part of it was the, we have the, uh, tool that we have to determine the responsibilities of an individual to help us determine their grade. And then I also consulted additional other counties that have this position to find out, does this person, what, you know, what grade do they fall in? And across the board, they all are the top position in that regard.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, any public input on this agenda item?
Uh, Betty Otten, four-six-seven-eight-seven-two-seventy-third Street, N.T. That was my very first question, was this budgeted for? And it was not. Um, and my second question is, are there contingencies to make this position justify the salary using efficiency ratings? And you had mentioned, um, that grant writing would offset it. But I looked through that entire thing and there's nothing in there about that they have to have proficiencies in grant writing. And I think that that should be one of the qualifications on a hire, is to put that grant writing position in there. Um, and also I have a question, is this going to be an independent decision maker? In other words, when you hire this person, are they gonna be able to make independent decisions for what you want them to do? Um, and I'm going to assume that all the elected officials, their staff and the departments will only use this person as an intermediary or a liaison because if you're an elected official, that person should not be able to touch or have any authority over them, their staff or their departments. Um, and then, um, the interviews, um, will the applicants be interviewed by an independent group of persons, not the commissioners, after the initial, um, vetting by HR? That to me is critical. I think that, uh, I had gone through a couple of them with, um, the sheriff's department, but I think it sounded already like Commissioner Poppins had his choice already when talking about, uh, buying land. Well, this isn't gonna be probably a quick, easy process and you're looking at buying land already, so I'm wondering if you already have somebody in mind for the job. So I'm just putting that out there to have somebody else interview rather than just you guys. Um, and then all of a sudden, eh, the first thing that hit me is not only, I mean, looking at the job description that this person's going to have, you've just created really a department within the commissioners department because this person, it'll be just like anything else, needs an assistant and then the assistant will need an assistant. And it's like, um, it, it just, it just doesn't stop. Uh, and then we're, and, and I agree that you should have this person, but I believe that it should be an independent person, independent, not just you go take care of this 'cause we don't wanna do it type thing. But the grant writer is not in the job description. Um, and then where would this person be housed? Where are you gonna put his office or hers? And then, um, I agree with, um, uh, Joel, Commissioner Joel, that, uh, taxpayer lobbyists should not be paid for that. That, that struck me really hard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public input?
If I may, Madam Chair, I would like to comment.
Um, just one minute.
Thank you.
Good morning again. Mark Nordsee, seventy-one-hundred, or seventy-nine-hundred South Pinewood. I was a member of the Financial Action Network and so I'm going to remind you of some of their findings. I'm not here representing them, I'm representing myself. But we issued a port, a report to you guys back in April. And in that report, two pages were dedicated to this exact issue. We had intense discussions about whether or not this position was necessary and what it would do. The fact of the matter, it is, is absolutely necessary. It should be funded. It should be hired. But I want you to, before you accept the job description before you, is go back to that report. There's two pages that talk about what the essential functions of this job are and what they should be. And number one is, it should be revenue neutral. This position should absolutely fund itself through finding efficiencies, finding grants, whatever. It simply can't be an addition. And as, uh, Betty Otten pointed out, uh, we can add a lot more expenses to this. We can, they're gonna get a car. They're gonna get, uh, maybe an assistant. It's, you need to be cautious of how much this position actually costs and hold them accountable yearly to savings. Let me give you an example of one savings or efficiency that, that I just recently wish, uh, witnessed. Uh, several weeks ago, you had a great discussion about the highway superintendent's new location out at his, uh, facility. You guys spent forty minutes talking about that, doing space planning in real time. I, that was probably one of the most inefficient use of your time I could think of. At the end of that, you made a resolution, you funded an, uh, an option and in a few minutes, you're gonna hear that that option wasn't even done. Uh, so there's forty minutes you'll never, ever get back. So that's what something, um, uh, a, a position would, would help you solve. They're gonna be They're gonna be a gatekeeper, they're gonna make sure that it's, uh, options that come before you have been researched, have been well thought out, are supported in facts, so you can make an informed decision. You don't have to sit up here and do real-time space planning. That's just not effective. I would recommend that maybe you, uh, reactivate the FAN in a capacity to look at this job description for you. Let them review it again and come back with recommendations. We've heard some great comments already this morning. And lastly, uh, to what, uh, Betty Otten said, I do think you should maybe select some of the folks from the FAN committee to help you interview for this position. This is probably the most critical hire you're gonna make in Lincoln County in a long, long time. And it is absolutely needed, but it needs to be done right. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input on this agenda item? All right, Commissioners, any discussion?
Just for clarity, I may be a little sensitive to people reading into something I may have said and misinterpreting it. Uh, there is nobody that is preconceived for this job. And the point about buying land is for the courthouse that we're trying to actively do and is extremely difficult as there's not many places that are suitable and very, uh, even less that are for sale. Uh, so this individual would be able to, um, would have been able to, if they are on board or ready, help contact landowners, uh, and maybe try to acquire that. Cause at this point, we don't have a site. And it is the critical thing to do, uh, for this to move forward. And it's a hurdle that it is getting bigger and bigger, not smaller and smaller. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I say this partly in jest, okay? The first contract I signed, uh, as a teacher in the last linehead and all other duties deemed necessary by the superintendent. Well, you try that one on. And, uh, if it would satisfy, we could always see all other duties deemed necessary by the commission. And it might satisfy a whole plethora of things. I, you know, I agree with, with all of your, your comments about the, the critical need for this. And one of the things that we are really lacking is strategic planning. And I would hope that this individual is heavy on strategic planning to look at our future. I mean, your point's well made, Mark, about wasting time, about talking about this. But we gotta know where we're going. And it's not gonna get any easier with the growing communities you have and some of the goals that they have and how that plays into where the, where the county should be. So I, I haven't heard anything that is, uh, objectionable. I will say that, uh, that salary is a little bit on the high side, but I guess you gotta get what you can want. So you might have to pay for it.
You know, Commissioner Schmidt, in the army, we call that other duties as assigned. And that means when you go to somebody and you tell them you're gonna do this, they can't respond with, that's not my job. Cause you've just been assigned a new job. So, but I take your point that, uh, there are some other things that this person, this position could do, and I think grant writing is one of them. Maybe that we need to put that in our redline version of the essential functions as grant writing, cause that would be important, that they help pay for themselves. So I agree with Commissioner Landine about the grant writing portion. And, uh, I, I just think it's important for people to understand right now that what's really happening here is that we have a deputy state's attorney that spends a significant amount of time doing this job. There, nobody has talked to me about this position or this agenda item. Nobody in my mind is there to, that this position was created to hire for. And, um, so, I mean, generally, I'm opposed to adding new FTEs anyway. But realistically, the discussion here is we're taking away from prosecutorial duties that occur in the state's attorney's office. And this position relieves that function and it does support a law enforcement function that frees up, ostensibly would free up a deputy state's attorney to focus full-time on either civil litigation and/or criminal prosecution. So, um, that's the way I see this, and that's why I think there's some good in it. And, you know, I've got some hesitation with the cost. So we're, we can maybe offset that with grant writing. But there would have to be some benchmarks put in there to ensure that the grant writing actually does come to fruition. So I'm sure we could figure that out.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to table this agenda item.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would it be possible for, to ask our deputy state's attorney? Uh, I'd, I'd like to ask him a few questions as far as how much time and effort and so forth he's had to do this last couple of weeks on that, is that appropriate at this time?
Well, you can sure ask him, but I can attest lots and lots of hours being put in, we're building a courthouse now.
And how much time it's taken away from his so-called real job.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to table, but I-
I'll second that.
I, if I may first-
Do you wanna comment, Bill?
Oh, I, I'm taking the good part of this.
I'll offer the motion to table, but I won't, I won't be voting for it because I do think all of the things that we talked about, we all in agreement on, and we need to, to keep moving forward, um, need to get this advertised.
I'll, I'll second that, if you're looking for a second.
No, I think I got one from Jim. But I urge us not to table this. I think all of the things that have been brought up can be handled, um, as we move forward. Simply delaying it is just simply a delay tactic and it doesn't gain us, I don't think, anything that we can't do today, so.
Well, I think we need to at least agree on the job description. How would this get advertised? Would this job description get advertised? Cause I think those essential functions do need to include grant writing and those sort of things. So I think we need to agree on some language for this, if this is actually what's going to get advertised for the position.
Yeah, I take the essential functions and I put that up as like the, the main thing for advertising for this position. So I, you know, whatever items that we wanna have in there, we would wanna have, so I can, uh, find the right person. You know, or at least put the right, uh, not find the right person, but find the right language for everyone to know what they're expecting to have, apply for. So yes, we should have, whatever you wanna have added in essential functions before I post a job would be appreciated.
That's the only reason I'm asking for the motion to table is just to work out the language of the, um, the job itself. So I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Items tabled and, um, I'm gonna ask our deputy state's attorney to have a discussion with Mr. Nordsy about, uh, Nordsy, about the interview process. And maybe that's not a bad idea to have it vetted by, um, somebody outside. If that's something we can even do. But I'll leave that to you, yet another, uh, job. All right, we're gonna move on to item eight on our agenda.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, bringing before you to reclassify a position in the highway department from a heavy equipment specialist to a diesel mechanic. As I have in the agenda item briefing form, this position is currently vacant. What we're asking, uh, the wage for this position, we would reclassify, but that is also within guidelines of the budget. So the position is already available for us, it's already in the budget for this. But we wanted, uh, your permission to change the language, um, from a heavy equipment to a diesel mechanic. The goal with that is to actually have someone who is trained and has had extensive experience in maintenance, rather than having somebody who's just learned on the go. So that way we can better take care of our equipment in the highway department.
Uh, thank you. Um, any public input on this agenda item? All right, Commissioners, any questions?
Chair, is this, is this just a change in title? Or is this a new position or what is it?
Um, as Tracy had said, this is a reclass, so this is a position that we've had, um, I believe it was created eighteen or nineteen, um, as a heavy equipment specialist.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've, this position has been vacant for a year and a half now. Been kinda waiting ever since this guy left. Uh, and then I found out we were gonna have union and it was, I was told that I couldn't reclassify this until they had a contract. So I've been patiently waiting. And, uh, now is the time to do it. Like I said, I do have somebody at the shop that is currently doing it. He has the education, but he does not want the position. I have two guys doing it, actually, um, it's one of the guys on the crew and my op supervisor are doing it. So we need somebody out there to do this. So my hope is to get this reclassified, so we can open it up immediately. And the hope would be to have somebody by April, so.
All right, other questions? With that, any other public comment, input on this agenda item? All right, if not, I'd ask for a motion.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll? I did. Yes, I asked for public input. I'll ask again, is there any public input on this agenda item? Okay, there's not. So I'm asking for a motion.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's to approve.
Okay, call the question, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Morning, Terry.
All right, I've got, uh, several items here. The first one is gonna be, um, looking for permission to, um, request bids for a, uh, a one-ton, five-fifty pickup chassis unit. The hope was, uh, we could get one off a state bid. Um, but they do not have any available. There are no build slots available, they're all sold out. So we're gonna look, see if we could go to and buy it through Billion Fleet. Problem is, um, the, there, everything is over sixty thousand dollars. Well, if that's the case, I don't have a bid, I can't get quotes, so I need to go to bid myself. So, um, we put together a, a bid spec for a vehicle. And, uh, we're hoping to, uh, get permission to go to bid and, uh, purchase this thing. So this is gonna be our new sign truck. Um, it's gonna replace a two thousand and six GMC, I believe it is, or Chevy. It's probably got two-hundred-and-forty thousand miles on it. We're having a lot of issues with it. So I will say, um, as I had in my briefing form, the price of this unit's gonna be, um, between sixty-five and seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand just for the chassis on this unit. I did have that in the budget, I don't have that much budgeted, but I had, um, the utility box for the sign box put on it. I have that in my budget, which, um, we're looking at pricing on that. And I can't even get them this year. So I will be using some of that money to help purchase this chassis unit. And then next year, we'll have to, um, purchase, uh, I'll have to put in my budget to purchase the, uh, the box unit to go on it, so.
Anybody have any questions for Terry?
Terry, the, the utility box, is that a fuel tank and air compressor and all that kinda stuff?
No, it's gonna be a bunch of-
Why is that so expensive?
Problem is, it isn't, it, it isn't that expensive. Well, it's expensive, but the availability. I can't get any. So my hope is, and this is, this is, again, this is probably gonna be a long shot, I hope I get some bids on this. Because then I don't even know if they can deliver by the end of the year. I mean, talking with, with, I mean, I'm hoping I get some bids on it. Um, we tried going through Boyer Ford. About a week and a half ago, they had one open build slot for a, for a truck unit. But they needed a purchase agreement signed immediately. And it was a week and a half to the next meeting, um, so we lost it. So I'm hoping there's one out there somewhere, um, a build slot that we can get a, we can get a bid on, so. Um, like I said, the unit, the box units aren't, I don't know that they'd be hard to get, but, or they're not that expensive, but they're gonna be hard to get. I don't know if I'd be able to purchase one, and besides, I won't have the money this year. Not with the, not with the chassis costing more, so.
All right, is there any public input on this item? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Terry, I say we get the truck, do get some bids and get the truck, timing wise. And we don't know for sure if we'll get a body. Is your intent to maybe move the existing body over to it if, if down the road we can't get the body? I'm just kinda curious what we're doing with this truck if we don't.
Uh, the, the, the plan would be, I don't know if we can use the old body, the old, the old body was on there, um, when we purchased it. It's getting beat up pretty bad. So I don't, and the wheel, wheelbase length on that, it may not fit. That might, that'll be a bridge we cross when we get there, uh, you know, but again, if, if we can get it in the budget for twenty-four, budgets finalized, what, by October first, we can get, get to go to bid by October for, for a box. You know, hopefully we'd get it by July, July of twenty, twenty-four.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair.
I, I am gonna call the question, this is simply to authorize a request for bids, not to actually purchase anything right now. So, um, I'm gonna call the question.
Commissioner, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Next item.
Next item I have is, uh, board action setting the twenty-twenty-three spring load limits for Lincoln County roads. Uh, again, we have a resolution that's attached, uh, to the items. Um, I will just bring up the map. We're not changing, uh, anything from last year's, um, spring load limits. Pretty much staying the same. So, um, like I said, we have a, we have a, um, a resolution in there, um, for you guys to set these. Seven ton per axle, forty ton max on designated roads and then six ton per axle on gravels. So, asking for approval for the chair to execute that resolution.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Terry? All right, any public input on this agenda item? If not, thank you. Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you for that. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Next item.
Next item I have is, uh, authorizing the chair to execute a letter, uh, sent to, to carrier enforcement. So they can come and, uh, enforce the, uh, spring load limits on our roads.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Any public comment on this item? All right, if not, consider a motion. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Jim.
We got a second by Commissioner Gibbon. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, John.
Good morning. So yes, I am here to say that the highway department has, the highway superintendent and his administrative assistant have been moved out to the highway shop. We were able to do it without adding a wall, but I will tell you it's very crowded, if you would all take a chance to visit out there. We felt like this would be a very quick way of getting them out there and suit their needs for now. But yes, we'd like to still move forward and try to get bids for our, to try to look at doing an addition to that building. I do not have, uh, any answers on that yet, though I'm still waiting to hear back from a couple of people, so.
All right, well, as soon as you have some more information on that, I mean, just get it on the agenda and we'll talk about it.
Sounds good.
John, did, so Terry and his assistant are now cleared out of what was the highway shop?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so can we put anybody in there now?
It's currently, yes, we've been occupying it as of yesterday. But we've, we've got a little bit of, uh, painting to do and stuff too, but, um, we're slowly occupying it.
Okay, so who's in there now?
Um, state's attorney's office.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commission. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. Today I'm looking for a board action to adopt a resolution establishing fees for property information from the Director of Equalization Office. I believe on the briefing form, there is a resolution that states that. Sean, do you read it?
I can read that, yes. Uh, it's a resolution to establish fees for property information in the Office of the Director of Equalization, whereas it is in the best interest of the county to develop a standardized fee schedule for property information requests in the Office of the Director of Equalization to assure that information, when- to assure that information, when requested, is standardized. And whereas any requests, whether online or at the courthouse, are subject to the fee schedule adopted by this resolution, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commission of Lincoln County, South Dakota, that as of January first, 2023, the Lincoln County Director of Equalization Office will charge with the Lincoln County Treasurer administering the following fees. Requests will be one dollar per property card, or one dollar per page for other documents that are legally permitted. All fees collected shall be deposited in the General Fund of Lincoln County. The Beacon Property Information Portal is ten dollars a day, thirty dollars per week, fifty dollars per month, or four hundred and fifty dollars annual subscription. No refunds or prorations. All fees collected shall be deposited to the account set up for the online portal.
Anybody have any questions for Carla?
So if, I mean, I think this all looks fine, it looks pretty consistent with what other counties, other municipalities do, but let's say, for example, you get a phone call that says, can you give me the information on this? I mean, in the past, typically, you just pass the information along over the phone, right? Are you now going to say, nope, you have to go to the website and look this up? Or are you still continuing to just pass the information along over the phone?
So currently, if it's a verbal information, we, that's free. They can call up, ask where footage, lot size, we'll tell them all that information. If they're requesting a property record card, or any other documentation, we would first direct them to the Beacon Portal. A lot of that information is currently for free. If they want the information that's more, you know, structure, details, you know, the square footage, bedroom, bathroom type of information, that is schedule, that is a subscription type pricing. If, we would direct them to the Beacon Portal, or Property Information Portal for that. We would not send any requests of the property record card online, but verbal information, absolutely free.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions? Any public input on this item? All right, if not, I consider a motion.
I'll so move.
Second.
Thank you, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Thank you.
Next item is a first reading?
The first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as tract one, Timmermans addition, southeast quarter of section seventeen, township one hundred north, right fifty-one west, Delapre Township, from the A one agricultural district to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends denial, five to one.
All right, thank you, Sean. Move on to item fifteen.
So what we need to do is, I need to do a contingency transfer for the 2022 budget. The reason that we're doing it is that during the twenty-one audit, there was a discrepancy. We have identified the discrepancy, now we need to get the books corrected, basically. I wanted to go back to 2022, just so that we can start twenty-three off with a clean slate. The amount of the contingency is going to be one hundred and twenty-six, seven ninety-seven oh four, and that will be from the contingency to the commissioner's budget. And then we'll make the correction out of the commissioner's budget.
All right, anybody have any questions for Sherri? All right, any public input on this item? If not, I consider a motion to approve?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'm going to second, Madam Chair, and I'd just like to say, I appreciate the work the auditor's office did on this, and, you know, initially, I opposed the creation of the new FTE, because it wasn't revenue neutral, but there has been a departure in the treasurer's office now that allows us, and if anybody reads into the weeds and the details here, we're moving some of that money from treasurer's office to the auditor, so all kind of worked out in the end.
All right, got a motion and a second. No, there being no public input, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
And my second item is to adjust the 2023 budget. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to decrease the treasury budget and the salaries, the personal items, for salaries, OESI, retirement, group health insurance, I'll decrease their budget by fifty-eight thousand, five ninety-four ninety-seven, and do the same increase to the same lines into the auditor's budget for the fifty-eight thousand, five ninety-four ninety-seven. And then, I just caution that, with the person that is hired, if there's a budget shortfall in mind, we still might have to supplement it, because this is just taking the wages from X point forward, not counting January wages that have already been paid out.
Understood. Any questions for the auditor? All right, if not, any public input on this agenda item? All right, consider a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Bill.
Good morning. I'm going to ask you to remove this one from the agenda, there were some issues that came up, and so I do not have a contract for you at this time.
All right, then we will not address that item today. We're going to move into our opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to come up, please feel free to do that now.
I apologize, you see me three times in one day. Mark Nordsee, seventy-nine hundred, South Pinewood. I would just like to express my gratitude to Commissioner Schmidt for being on the phone and testifying in front of the legislature on the property tax option for Lincoln County, for whatever we decide to build, whether it's a courthouse, a jail, or whatever it is. That testimony was incredibly important. The bill did not pass out of committee, but it was referred to the forty-first day, whatever that is. So we'll get to see it again, but your support is important, and a comment that Commissioner Schmidt made was, there's a feeling in here that this is a new tax, and in reality, it's not. It's just a new way of collecting revenue that we're going to collect anyway. We're either going to collect it through the property tax, or we're going to collect it through the sales tax. Our property taxes are the highest in the state, and that's not a good, good place to be. So, so the sales tax option really does give us something to do, and it spreads it out a little bit more equitable about potentially the people who will be using those facilities. So thank you, Commissioner Schmidt, and thank you for the commission, for supporting that bill in the legislature.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up? All right, if not, we've got several executive session items, so right now, I just, we may take some action on these when we come out, but I need a motion.
Madam Chair, before we go?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Mark, but I think a special thank you goes to Representative Otten. This is his second time that he proposed this. This is not a popular item to be brought in this particular year, but through his leadership and through his determination, we had a great discussion. And as I told you last week, what was most disappointing of all, to have two representatives from Lincoln County that voted no on this thing, and then put it to the forty-first date. I wish they would reconsider, or else become aware of the needs that counties have. It was very disappointing to have your very own representatives not supporting that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Are there any other reports by the commission?
Madam Chair, I do.
Go ahead.
So Jody Kuyper's, a while ago, she is the sister of a lady who was, and the aunt of a child that was tragically killed in Harrisburg at the train crossing. And Jody called me concerned about that railroad intersection and the sightlines being obstructed, and very concerned about the traffic flow there, given the increased traffic that's going to occur as a result of growth in Harrisburg and growth in the county. And working with County Highway Shop, you know, Terry looked to see if we had any cross signs for additional signs. We didn't have any. The township didn't have any, but working with the city of Harrisburg, city of Harrisburg now did agree to purchase additional flashing solar-powered signs at a cost of about eighty-five hundred dollars. And City Harrisburg passed that last week, they're now going to put those additional signs in, so there will be warning, additional number of feet away from the railroad tracks at that intersection now, so I think the current railroad crossing signs are with, are actually so close to the railroad track, they're only about fifty feet away from it. They're now going to be an additional set of warning signs out there, and if anybody's traveled on that road, they understand how dangerous that intersection is. There's just some real reduced sightlines, because you've got the water reclamation plan on one side, and then you've got the railroad tracks which intersect at an angle. It is not a traditional, what I would call, South Dakota railroad intersection, where you can see the train coming for miles. And I think over a hundred people from Harrisburg now have called the State Department of Transportation, and the State Department of Transportation has now elevated that intersection to be one of their top priorities for this construction year. Just so the public understands, this is a very expensive undertaking. The state DOT has told me that that construction project, if you want to put gates and signs, what I would call the premium type of protection package out there, it could cost over a million dollars to do that. And that will be one of the very few million-dollar projects to occur on a gravel road in the state of South Dakota. And they're looking at it, and they think it's an important project, given the fatalities that occurred out there. And also, what has happened now is the yield signs have been taken down, and they're going to be stop signs. So I appreciate the work that are, you know, at least looking into it, that the county did, and the township did, and now because the city has technically taken jurisdiction of that road over, they're the ones who are the bill payer on that. And I appreciate Ms. Kuyper's coming to this commission and trying to ask for action to be taken on it. So I appreciate that. Just one other note, Madam Chair, I serve on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, they put out their quarterly newsletter, so it's really super slick magazine that they put out quarterly, and there's an excellent article in there about how, in the last decade, Lincoln County has gone from having four hundred dairy cattle to having over thirteen thousand three hundred milk cows. There has been an explosion of dairy production in this county over the last decade, and I hope we take that into consideration in the upcoming review of the comprehensive plan that we're doing, in order to allow and create spaces, and take this into consideration for zoning, as to where we can allow more milk production to occur up and down the I-29 corridor, and more value-added ag, because we produce an incredible amount of corn and grain in this county, and when you can use that in order to supplement dairy production in any way possible, it goes towards adding value to our crops. So I encourage everyone to look at the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance article about dairy production as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have reports today? All right, if not, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to S D C L one twenty-five-two, sub one, three, and four.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session?
Geez, that's not until hour though. Motion to come out of executive session?
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sean. Sean, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
All right, coming out of executive session, we're going to move to items three and four of that agenda. We'll take up item three first. Was Toby going to come in and present anything on these? Or do you want to give the rundown?
I will cover that for you, if that's okay.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Toby is asking for permission to go ahead and go forward with the contract in order to, to begin the comprehensive plan reevaluation, and it's the old wing group, he's negotiated a contract, I believe it's for ninety-four thousand dollars, and he's asking for permission to go ahead and move forward with the contract.
And they have a new name?
Yeah.
Same people, but, mid-med tech, or mid-
Stan Tech.
Stan Tech, thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. So this contract would be with Stan Tech?
Yes.
To provide that service? My understanding, the cost was approximately ninety-four, five?
It was ninety-four, five.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just say this, I appreciate the work Toby did on this, there's been a lot of people who have contacted me, asking to want to be a part of the review of the comprehensive plan, and this contract approval gets that process started, so looking forward to it. It'll take approximately a year to do this, so let's get it started.
All right, is there any public input on this item? All right, if not, got a motion and a second. May I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next agenda item?
Planning and zoning was asking for permission to move forward with a grant. It would be a grant in order to steady drainage issue over on piece of property in T. I think we've sectioned off a portion of it, fifty-four acres for, that we're selling, the other portion of the land is low ground. The grant would allow the county to go ahead and explore whether or not that can be used as drainage, or for retention for water in that area. The, I think it's a twenty-seven thousand dollar grant, and the matching funds are five thousand dollars, and so asking for permission to move forward with that.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
That's a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.